Please come to the podium at this time. Okay, seeing no approach to the podium, I'm going to motion to adjourn this public hearing. Motion made by
So moved.
Member Sador, seconded by
Second.
Member Palmer. Discussion. Seeing no discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Okay, that motion to close the public hearing passes seven zero. All right, we have a resolution to consider. A resolution granting preliminary layout and final subdivision plat approval, race lot line adjustment. Whereas the applicant Chad Munir, on behalf of the owner, shall race has submitted an application for approval of a minor subdivision plat to alter the lot lines of two existing lots. To convey 2.54 acres to lot one identified as 132600-7063-15-628335, associated address 49 Nellie Hill Road. From lot two identified as tax lot number 132600-7063-15-656330, associated address 5557 Nellie Hill Road. Resulting in a 3.415 acre lot, lot one, and a 1.005 acre lot, lot two, collectively known as the project. And whereas the project is depicted on a minor subdivision plat entitled proposed lot line change prepared for show race. Situate in the town of Dover, Dutchess County, New York, prepared by Bambi Terrell Munir dated August 30, 2024, last revised October 8, 2024, known as a subdivision plat. And whereas lot one and two are located within the HR zoning district, which has a minimum lot requirement of one acre and within the principal aquifer overlay district. And whereas lot two is also located within the floodplain and stream corridor overlay districts. And whereas the project will result in two conforming lots, eliminating the existing nonconformity of lot one by increasing lot size from 0.88 acres to 3.42 acres. And by placing the pool and the subject system on the same lot house they serve. And whereas zoning development is proposed on lot one or two as part of the project, and a proper case does not exist for requiring recreation fees. And whereas on October 7, 2024, the planning board classified the project as a type two action under the state environmental quality review act. And whereas a duly noticed public hearing was held on October 21, 2024, during which all those who wish to speak were heard. Now therefore be resolved that the planning board hereby grants preliminary layout approval to the subdivision plat. Be further resolved that the planning board hereby grants final subdivision approval to the subdivision plat and authorizes the chair or his authorized designee to affix his signature to the subdivision plat after compliance with the following conditions. One, payment of all fees and escrow. This resolution is being offered by
So moved.
Member Sador, seconded by member Volano. Discussion. Okay, seeing no discussion. Resolution granting preliminary layout and final subdivision plat approval, race lot line adjustment. Secretary, please call the roll.
Member Williams.
Aye.
Member Volano.
Aye.
Member Sador.
Aye.
Member Roman.
Aye.
Member Palmer.
Aye.
Member La Robidier.
Aye.
Chair 214.
Aye. Okay, that resolution passes by vote of seven zero. Congratulations. You have to pay all your fees and escrow. All set?
All right.
Thank you.
So get the Mylar printed and get it over to
The secretary.
Good, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Two copies and the Mylar.
Okay, two papers and a Mylar, okay.
Thank you. All right. Next on the agenda is old business for Harlem Valley Homestead. Okay, so for Harlem Valley Homestead, we have one of their consultants. If you'd like to run us through.
Good evening, John Watson from Insight Engineering Surveying Landscape Architecture here, representing Harlem Valley Homestead. Just to give you a quick update, we are closely approaching November 1st, which is the ending of the Indiana bat tree cutting restrictions. So we're looking to start construction of the project shortly. We have submitted to town a, our, all the conditions of final site plan approval. So that's, that's with you to review, make sure we've got all those conditions. And the road control permit is one of those conditions. So we're here tonight for review of that. I know Town Engineer Berger has reviewed it, our estimate.
Okay, so this is a project we approved some time ago, but did not at the time approve the erosion and control permit because we didn't have the number for the bond, correct?
Correct.
Yeah. So that is something we are looking to vote on tonight. I don't have any comments or questions. Does any member of the board have any comments or questions? Okay. Engineer Berger, if you'd like to go first.
No, the plans are the same, they didn't change. We approved them before. All it was again was the bond estimate, which I looked at and I agreed with. And I sent a memo to the board already on that.
Planner Werner, anything here?
No comments on this. And with regard to the site plan that was submitted satisfying, to review for satisfaction of conditions. The stuff that I was looking at, I don't have any further comment. I know Victoria might have some additional comment on like legal matters, easements, et cetera, but nothing for me.
Okay. Any other there?
Hi, so the board already held a hearing. It's already been referred to county planning. We followed all of the procedural steps when you were considering the majority of the application, the site plan and special use permit. So this really is just closing the loop on the ESC permit. As far as the conditions, there are still a few outstanding, so.
There's the, the letter of credit, which we, I believe we, you know that to your office, Victoria?
Have the resolution. Maybe Tom Jacobellis, he's the town attorney.
Okay.
He would have that.
Okay. So that, yeah, that, you're right, thanks for correcting me. So yeah, that was sent to Tom Jacobellis, so that's with him. And then there's, there's a question on the easement, Victoria, that I know that you were looking for some additional language in the easement.
Right, the easements haven't been, they're close, but we don't have the finals yet. And then there were a few other legal documents. If I could, I wasn't, I didn't have the resolution open because I thought we were just talking about the ESC permit, but I can find it.
We are just doing the
As far as we know, I think the ball's in your court though on the, on the easement, is that the way you see it?
No.
Okay, I thought that we
We are waiting for a revised copy.
What's that?
Nope, we commented and we sent it back and said we need an updated map and we need some new language.
I, I talked to our attorney today, I thought we sent that back to you. But if we didn't, that's fine.
He wrote back to me and wants me to draft it, so I wrote back.
That you're not drafting it?
Yes. So yeah, so we were still waiting on a few things, but
I know that has anything to do with the erosion and control.
No, no, but as long as I'm here, I'm just trying to make sure.
Conditions and then
He's wrapped up.
So I mean, there were a few other ones. So what would be helpful, it's like recordation of the approved conveyance consolidation deed with Dutchess County Clerk.
Yep.
Proof of filing of the subdivision plat with the county clerk. Then you have to do the easements that we were just talking about. Department of Health approval. So
Yeah, on the plat, we were holding off on filing that until we had all the easements, we're trying to file everything at once. So we have everything ready to file, we're just waiting for filing.
Okay, yeah, but when I look at the checklist, I see a lot of open ones, so that's why we don't have that information.
Okay. All right, thanks for that.
Okay. Any other, anything further?
Not on the ESC permit, no.
Okay. Planning board members having heard from our consultants, anybody have any comments, questions at this time regarding the erosion sediment control permit? All right. Mr. Watson, do you have anything further to add?
No, thank you.
Okay. All right, so we're asked to consider here a resolution granting erosion sediment control permit approval for Harlem Valley Homestead. Whereas Harlem Valley Homestead LLC, the applicant has submitted an application for erosion sediment control permit in connection with its plans to establish a country and conference center use consisting of an agricultural education center, farm stay lodging, educational workshops, retreats, and events on property located at 1323147 Old Forge Road, known as the project. And whereas on March 6, 2023, the planning board granted the applicant special use permit, site plan, and architecture review board approval in conjunction with conditional preliminary layout and final subdivision approval for the project, but delayed approval of the erosion sediment control permit until an estimate for the performance bond was provided. And whereas the project is depicted on, among other things, submission set forth in Schedule A of this resolution, the plan set. And whereas the parcels involved in this application are identified as tax numbers 7160-00-981478, 7260-00-062777, dash 089448, dash 123597, dash 089448, and dash 167790, collectively known as the site. And are located in the rural district, RU and Resource Conservation, RC zoning districts, partially within the floodplain, stream corridor, and aquifer overlay districts, and partially within New York State Agricultural District 23. And whereas country and conference center uses are permitted in the RU and RC zoning districts, subject to issuance of a special permit of the planning board. And whereas the project includes the widening and paving of portions of Old Forge Road, as well as the reconfiguration of the intersection of Old Forge Road and Route 55. And whereas the project proposes to physically disturb approximately 25 acres of land. And whereas on October 27, 2022, the project was referred to the Dutchess County Department of Planning and Development pursuant to section 239-M of the general law, which responded on December 5, 2022, that it was a matter of local concern with comments. And whereas on August 20, 2024, the planning board received an estimate from the applicant for the cost of erosion sediment control for $111,440 that's set forth in a document titled Engineers Opinion of Probable Costs Prepared by Inside Engineering Surveying and Landscape Architecture PC dated March 15, 2023, and based on the plan set. And whereas the planning board held duly noticed public hearings on the project on September 20, 2021, October 4, 2021, November 15, 2021, December 5, 2022, January 23, 2023, and February 6, 2023. During which time the public has had the opportunity to testify and provide written comments for the planning board's consideration. And whereas on March 6, 2023, the planning board adopted negative declaration determining that the project as proposed would not result in any significant adverse impacts and that a draft environmental impact statement would not be prepared. Now therefore be resolved that the planning board hereby grants the applicant an erosion sediment control permit for disturbance as shown on the plat set, subject to the following conditions. One, submission of $1,500 to be placed into escrow to cover the cost of site inspections by the town engineer. Two, submission of a performance guarantee in the amount of $111,440 in form substance and matter of execution satisfactory to the town board and the town attorney. Be further resolved that before the authorized official may issue a strategic compliance for work completed in accordance with the erosion sediment control permit, the planning board engineer shall provide the authorized official with a written statement indicating that all work authorized under the permit has been completed and is satisfactory. Erosion sediment control permit shall expire one year from the date of this resolution. And then there's this Schedule A. That goes for about two plus pages. All right. Need a motion to consider this resolution, motion made by Member La Robidier, seconded by Member Roman. Discussion. Okay. Seeing no discussion, resolution granting erosion sediment control permit approval for Harlem Valley Homestead. Secretary, please call the roll.
Member Williams.
Aye.
Member Volano.
Aye.
Member Sador.
Aye.
Member Roman.
Aye.
Member Palmer.
Aye.
Member La Robidier.
Aye.
Chairman Corteen.
Aye. The resolution passes seven zero. License.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. All right, next under old business, we have Starkdale Farm. Starkdale Farms.
Good evening, Chairman Corteen. My name is Judson Seabird, I'm an attorney with the law firm of Keenan Bean PC. I represent the applicant 3P Longevity LLC. And I'm joined this evening by literally everybody in the audience. Mick Baron from Hart Howerton. Mike McCormick, John Watson from Insight Engineering, Sarah Jaikle from BFJ Consulting, our planning consultant. The board will recall, we were here on August 5th for, I don't know how to characterize it other than maybe a pre, preliminary discussion. It was basically a kind of a, a rough draft of the direction in terms of the, of the way this project was shaping up and, and what we foresee as, you know, our vision or the client's vision for the project. Since that time, we did receive the AKRF memo that was tendered ader shortly before that meeting, responding to that. And provided the town actually with, and the town of Pauling with, you know, a full set of materials. A zoning petition in particular for the town of Dover. A, you know, a secret part one and a 30-page narrative accompanying that, that secret documentation and a, a plan set. Really to, really, the purpose of that is to kind of initiate what I'll call, you know, now like formal preliminary or just to get this ball rolling. We got to start somewhere.
Right.
And really with a view towards getting the secret process moving, first step of circulation. Couple of things with regard to the secret documentation, just want to put out front immediately. The secret documentation submitted indicated or specified that the potential lead agency is going to be the Dover Town Board. I just want to say that is obviously nothing set in stone, right? And that was more of a, kind of a informed assumption on our part. The reason being that nothing happens on the, on the Dover side until the zoning code is amended.
Right.
And it's just, you know, conceptually or, you know, in terms of how that secret is going to proceed, the town board was viewed as kind of the critical linchpin decision. Have AKRF's memo today, my colleague Jennifer Gray and I spoke with Ms. Pollador. Obviously, that goes a different direction, that's up to the town and we
Right.
We just want to get going.
Sure.
Secondly, with regard to the memo we received today, and we appreciate the comments from, from Aaron. We, I, I want to kind of make clear that we are fully prepared and really look forward to meeting with the zoning update committee. We had said, or my colleague, Mr. O'Rourke had indicated when we were here in August upfront, you know, we want this to be a product of dialogue. Whatever we do, we want the input from, from the town, just to see what, you know, what we have that's in common, what we need to tweak, et cetera. We had reached out to that committee before the submission. There was some correspondence, some email, we wanted to have a meeting, it didn't occur. We, we're not trying to sidestep that committee at all. I just wanted to clarify that. So with that, I, we can answer questions, like I said, we've got, you know, folks here that can, can answer any specific questions. We leave it to the board as to next steps.
All right. So this was sent along as a project update, I don't know if you wanted to
I can speak to this briefly, so really just a quick update on what was submitted on the next page here, what was submitted on October 2nd. You all have the information. And then the third page here is the updated site plan, which was also submitted along with this information. Some modifications to this, I can speak to it at a very high level, just responding to some feedback that we heard through comments from you all and, and the, the public that we spoke with, as well as spending more time on site and getting additional feedback from our consultant teams. To touch on a few high level moves here at the square, we've broken down the building massing there a little bit more to have it feel a little bit more like a farm, yeah, thank you, village area. We've taken what was a structure next to the historic Starkdale House on the west side of
Yeah, something there.
Right, we've moved that over to the east side. We've started to show some preliminary parking areas there to ground the parking counts that would be required for this on the site plan. Moving away from the square to the crescent area, the bottom right there, we've changed the configuration of that, those residences to focus more on the agriculture that's there and that will be developed further in this project so that the residences are really focused around the ag. And moved those products a little bit further away from Westover Road, so they're further back into the site now.
Okay.
On the East Ridge neighborhood, just to the right, a little bit of reconfiguration to the lots and the home sites based on updated wetland feedback and trying to avoid any road crossings through wetlands that might be needed to access those home sites.
And you've now included like rooftops, because before it was just parcel lines.
Before it was parcel lines, right, we've, we've gotten a little bit more information. Again, this is very generic idea of where a home could go on these ones, but
I think looking at this saying, well, you said, you made the house look like this and now it looks like that.
Yeah, yeah, but so we have a little bit more information from the topo, so we tried to sit those appropriately on site.
Sure.
On the west side of Westover Road, just on the west side of the lake there, a little reconfiguration to the cottages, a little further down. The row of cottages, yeah. Those, and then at the top of that is a staff housing area that we've started to map out. Little reconfiguration to that based on some feedback from our life safety and fire consultants in terms of road access and getting to those. And then further up onto the West Ridge and Cascade neighborhoods, similarly with the East Ridge, it's been refinements based on additional topography information, wetlands. And as you mentioned, starting to put some actual homes on these to show where they could situate, so.
Bridges going across the lake or pond and up here?
No, so those are cascading features, so the, the lake, because of the topography, would be tiered.
I see.
Not roads, and there, there's not currently a lake there, there are some blower than areas, but
You're making a lake.
Yeah, there's some, some reconfiguration there. So just very high level, some of the updates that we've made since the last time you all have seen the plan. We've done those in coordination with Insight Engineering on the civil engineering side to make sure that roads and utilities could, could lay out appropriately. And also in coordination with Keenan Bean, the attorney, in terms of what planning and zoning requests might be required for this plan. So wanted to provide that little update on the site.
Okay. So just when I was looking this over and looking at it again now, so you're still proposing a tunnel here and a tunnel down there?
Correct.
Okay. And when we had the site walk, all the traffic for the entire site was going to come in and out here, is that still true?
That is still true for the majority of the site. The sports and recreation area mid-page there would have at-grade access off Westover Road.
Okay. Okay. So someone, you're saying wouldn't be able to drive in here and then, you know, drive around and then go up?
No, I mean, the thinking currently is that emergency vehicle access would be able to come in there and access the site, but a resident or someone
Like it's a road, not a public road?
Right, exactly, yeah. But wanting to keep the sports and recreation part
Publicly accessible.
Yeah, publicly.
It's a private road, but
Yeah.
And to be clear, you're not proposing any roads be taken over by the towns of Dover, Pauling? All right. Okay. Any other comments or questions this time? Member Williams? Member Palmer?
Nothing.
Member La Robidier? Member Sador?
Nothing yet.
Member Roman?
No, not now.
Member Volano?
And it looks like you got one more access from Westover Road all the way down at the plan south, kind of cut off a little bit.
Right?
Yes, we do, also EVA access, so
Vehicle access.
Yeah, yeah, trying to limit that.
Right, we discussed that, I think, at some point.
Yeah.
Because you'd have, you know, Pauling equipment coming from the south, you'd have Dover equipment coming from the, the north.
Exactly.
Yeah, I think one of the things that was, so this, this might be then the emergency access to get to the side of the
Right.
Okay. Okay. Anything further? That's it. Okay. Just making sure I didn't miss it. Who'd like to go first?
Sure. I can go first. So everyone's trying to figure out how this process moves forward, it's a very large project and there are a lot of agencies that are involved. So right now, the planning board has the opportunity to provide comments on the zoning law that's been provided before we get into that formal review process, which is going to trigger timelines and public hearings and all of those other things. So the applicant has proposed zoning, the town board has not weighed in on it yet and said they are accepting it or they're not accepting it. They're, they're doing their budget season right now, it's a good opportunity for this board to talk about zoning. The idea is that everyone will get their comments to them, they'll make some refinements, they'll meet with the zoning committee. We'll get another draft and if it, if it addresses your concerns, at that point, we can talk about declaring lead agency and starting the secret review process.
Okay. And again, the idea of not declaring lead agency now is that if the zoning update committee of the town board is like, this zoning is a terrible idea, we don't want to do this, then they would might say, well, then we don't have a project and then there's really nothing to do.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah. And also because when we do declare it, we're going to circulate. And we want to, we want to send around at least a more updated draft that we all want to spend the time on.
Right.
So some of the things, do you want me just to talk through this draft?
Yeah, we had very similar comments because we did meet and discuss this, but go ahead and start, it's fine.
So I'll just provide a summary, I guess, of what they, what they provided. So the concept that they've come up with is a floating zone. So they've created an economic district floating zone that could apply to any parcel within the town of at least 400 acres that has access off a county road.
2,000 feet of frontage, actually.
2,000 feet of access, 2,000 feet of frontage on a county road.
So it can't be a state road?
I believe it just said county.
Just said county.
It just said county.
Very specific, okay.
It was specific to that, but we do have a lot of county roads in Dover and we have a lot of large parcels because it doesn't need to be a single parcel of 400 acres, it can be any
Contiguous.
Right, any contiguous acreage.
And if it's on both sides of the, right, if it's on both sides of the county road, then that's fine.
So one of the big picture questions for this town is, do you want to create this economic district floating zone, you know, with this very high density and very tall buildings that can apply anywhere in town? Or do you want something more tailored just to apply to this 400 acre site in Dover for this particular project? If it's the former and we're creating a new economic floating zone, we're going to, as part of the secret review, they're going to have to provide us with information on all the potential sites that this could cover and we're going to have to do a more expansive environmental review. So it's just, just a conceptual thing, because the town does want an economic district. I don't know if the town had envisioned this level of development as part of that economic district. The second big concept in this law. Again, because it's a floating zone, the town board has to make a decision, once they adopt the zoning regulations, they have to make a decision that it's appropriate on this particular site. So that would require a master plan. And then presumably the zoning would be adopted contingent on that master plan being implemented. But as it's drafted, the town board would retain site plan approval, special use permit approval, erosion sediment control permit approval, and they even proposed subdivision approval. So the planning board has a very limited role in this process. You would get referral at some point and you'd have 60 days to respond. So you guys should think about whether you think that's the right approach on this kind of project or whether, you know, you think the, it should go back to more of the usual way of handling land use applications. They've proposed some specific uses. And one of the issues that both Aaron and I noted is that the uses don't necessarily line up with the defined terms in Dover's own code. So, you know, once we get to that point where you're happy with the big picture concept, we'll hone in, you know, what does this use mean? Does it fit within our definitions or do we need to create a new definition just for this district? You know, some confusion about one of the permitted uses would be a country and conference center. We already have zoning for country and conference centers and that's a 200 acre minimum. So does that mean you need 600 acres to put a country and conference center in the ED district? Little, little things like that are going to have to get fleshed out. And then they also provided their own bulk regulations for this district.
I'm sorry, the Rome, excuse me?
Their own bulk regulations.
Oh, bulk regulations. And so right now, it's very broad. You can't exceed 20% of the overall district within the town of Dover. It's not clear if that means every potential ED district or every existing ED district or just the particular district that you're in. Building coverage can't be more than 10% of the Building coverage can't be more than 10% of the district, but again, at 400 acres, that's still pretty significant. There's a floor area ratio, and there's a maximum height of 65 feet for buildings. And you guys really need to sit and go through these bulk regs to make sure that, you know, what's on paper now and what they can actually build out kind of match. Maybe you want to say no more than, you know, some percentage of the site can exceed 65 feet or like...
Or one structure.
One structure, maybe 65 feet, because if every structure, if someone comes in and every structure is 65 feet, that's a very different feel than what you're seeing on the screen. So those were, those were the big picture comments, just how the law works.
As proposed by them.
As proposed by them.
Okay. Thank you.
I'll just add a little to that. So the understanding is that the, you know, the comp plan committee, when they, when it was adopted, one of the recommendations was to have this ED economic development floating zone. Our understanding is they're already kind of thinking about that and working on something, so that's why we recommend that this get, you know, they want to meet with the applicant and then talk just through, so that we can make sure everyone's on the same page on this. So that's the, you know, the referral to the zoning committee is based on that, the ongoing work and the interest in that floating zone being on the table currently. So if it's possible to have a meeting, you know, great, and we'll obviously help, you know. Our memos can go to the committee as well, so they can see what we thought. Happy to participate in any calls or meetings about it. We just, like we said at the initial meeting, we can't really help them write it, but we can give them the guidance that, you know, they can come back with something that is more, I guess, ready for the circulation on lead agency. So just to touch on that, you know, the memo that I submitted, it's really, it's long, but it's just, it's carrying over from the previous one. It has follow-up comments. A lot of the things were addressed as far as the EAF materials. I don't think we need to talk too much about the SEACER submission right now. But just to add on to the zoning and lead agency discussion, like comment number three has our bulleted list of preliminary comments on the local law.
Yep, okay.
Right, so the first one just talks about having it referred, and, you know, once this is in a position where we feel that, you know, it's been cleaned up a little bit, or it's in a more position that it's ready, we can discuss that circulation. And it sounds like the planning board would be the lead agency. I think those discussions have been ongoing with the town board. So once, again, once we get a resubmission, that can be discussed further. The second one just talks about the referral, what I just mentioned, that the work's ongoing with that committee, and we feel that it's appropriate for them to meet at this time. The third bullet just talks about, as Victoria said, this could, you know, it could apply to other properties. And when that's the case, typically, for environmental review purposes, you're supposed to at least generically, you know, analyze potential impacts that could happen on other properties as a result of this zoning change, because it's applied to other sites in town. If we can get this refined further, or maybe even changed to not a floating district, if it comes to it, it could be, you know, a special district of some kind. It eliminates that extra level of review, but, you know, we'll leave it up to the applicant to come back with what they think is most appropriate. That's what the second, the next bullet also mentions. Again, it's, it really has to do with the locational condition that they set forth in the draft, which was a minimum of 400 contiguous acres with at least 2,000 linear feet of frontage. So again, it's, there's a lot of applicability there. As we're seeing in a lot of towns in Dutchess County, there are a lot of agricultural assemblies that are not being used for that anymore, starting to be subdivided for sale. So this could have, you know, there's a lot of large properties that this could apply to. The next comment was just about the referral again. Oh, no, this is about the, like, as Victoria mentioned, the town boards, the way it's written now, the town board would have authority to, you know, to approve site plan, to approve master, the master development plan, subdivision approval, erosion and sediment control approval. These are things that this board's historically handled, even for large projects. So I, you know, we just felt that it's appropriate to stay with the planning board. If the planning board is to be lead agency for this, you know, the SEACER process could proceed, because it would cover the zoning change, it would cover all the development that they're proposing, the maximum number of units, et cetera. Once the SEACER process is over, that's when the town board would be able to act on the zoning or not, because they're an involved agency, and they have to make a decision following the SEACER. But the SEACER would be, would blanket, cover all these actions together. It would just be the planning board leading it, as is being discussed right now. The next bullet was about just noting that they have this, this floor area ratio limitation, it's 0.1. It might be a little better to maybe hone that down to what, maybe a certain FAR for, for different uses, an FAR for residential, an FAR for commercial, maybe even a unit cap. These are important things that, you know, I think if we can get those nailed down, the scope for the EIS can be defined better. There's a lot of things that would benefit from that.
And just so clear, the 0.1 floor area ratio, we might see that elsewhere as just 10%?
The 0.1 floor area ratio, it's based on the area of, like, the square footage of their development versus the size of the lot, so, right.
Yeah. So that a maximum 10%?
Right. But it's, right now, it's just blanket everything. It doesn't really split it up by uses, so. Again, the next one is about the definitions, as Victoria was talking about. There's some that are not defined. Usually, you know, local laws tend to have a definition section that can, if you're introducing new uses, it's good to define what those are exactly, or else it gets difficult to interpret. Some of these might also be applicable to current definitions that you have in your code. For example, a tavern and a service, or personal services, might already kind of be in line with what the town has for service businesses. So we think that we should, the applicant should take another look at those and maybe come back with some definitions, at least a few. There's other examples. A brewery is not defined in your code. There's no theater or cinema definition.
An longevity facility.
Yeah, I mean, we have conference centers, country inns, but this is a resort.
Right.
They've mentioned it as a resort, and they're talking about it as a resort, 100 keys, I think it was, or 150 keys. There's no definition for a resort. A wellness and longevity facility, it's not clear what that means. Specialty grocery, again, things that we could use a definition on. And maybe the zoning update committee can help too on that. With the heights, yeah, that's another important thing. It's 65 feet is the maximum. It's, that's, that could apply to everything. So maybe it makes sense to have heights by use, right? 65 feet maybe for the resort, different heights for houses. You know, that's, right now, having a maximum, again, this can be studied in the SEACER review. You can assume certain heights for visual impact analysis, and we can come up with, it can be refined for the FEIS, you know, down the line, based on the analysis. We can have further restrictions on height, but if they're willing to come back now with something that's a little more broken out by use, that could help. We noticed there wasn't a front setback from county road, just something that could be added as to align with what's the zoning code currently has. And, you know, this is preliminary, so we reserve the right to have some more comments down the line.
Sure.
Basically what this is saying.
Yeah.
Right, I think another thing to think of, big picture, is once there's separate lots created, we want to make sure there's enough detail that every time one of those individual houses wants to do something, they don't have to come in and amend the master plan or figure out the FAR for the entire 400-acre project.
Again, in part going back to, just because the house looked like this doesn't mean it can't be looking like that or something?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so then the rest of the memo was really just talking about comments we had on the EAF table of involved agencies, and also some comments about the threatened and endangered species report, which was updated. I just think that, you know, once, we can really get into the weeds on this when we have a draft scope for the EIS, exactly what is going to be studied for these topics. We just kept the, we kept the record going in the memo. I don't think it's really necessary to talk through them right now.
Okay.
For now, yes.
Right, now this, right, this list of the agency and the review, okay. All right. Engineer Berger?
No comments at this time.
Okay, thank you. All right, having heard from our consultants, any members of the planning board have any comments or questions at this time?
Nothing.
Okay. So the SEACER review obviously came up, and, you know, the, it seemed as though from your documentation that you're, you expected that the town of Dover, some entity of the town of Dover, possibly the town board, but maybe it's the planning board, would be the lead agency.
I'll say categorically, our view is that if there's a lead agency, it should be town of Dover, just given the fact that most of this project, and really the, the kind of the more complex components of it. Pauling is basically housing. In terms of a genuine, you know, kind of mix of uses, et cetera.
Right.
Dover, so it should be the town board, as we contemplated in the SEACER submission we provided, or the planning board, but it should be Dover.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, as you can see on the drawing, there's a...
Yeah.
This is the town line here, as pointed out in the memo, and you can do some math. It says, right, almost about two-thirds is Dover, and one-third is Pauling.
Right.
100% of the commercial is in Dover.
Exactly.
The, really the only entrance to the site is in Dover, except for the sports and recreation part entrance, which is also in Dover. Okay.
And, I mean, look, again, we appreciate the comments. I mentioned before, we want the dialogue. I think that, for example, the issue with the floating zone, perfect reason why we need to kind of talk this out. When we pick up the comp plan, it talks about a floating zone. That really was the, kind of the genesis of our, you know, of our proposal or tying into the floating zone, and not saying it's not appropriate or, you know, but that, that really informed us in terms of what we presented. With regard to the, with the law, the local law was not intended to cut the planning board completely out of the process. We really envisioned kind of a macro and sort of macro-micro breakdown. Town board really taking the lead on the, on the macro issues. Master plan, subdivision, which is typically a planning board function, but, you know, in terms of creating the broad kind of contours, we figured that would be, should be lumped in at that kind of initial master planning phase.
Right.
Planning board, I went back through the code today. It doesn't matter, we'll talk this out, but it, we did, we did provide for the planning board to be involved at site plan approval.
Sure.
Okay? Other things, uses, et cetera. These are all the kinds of things we've got to kind of tweak and work on, so we look forward to doing so.
Okay.
I did say I had something to say. You said no, none of us did.
Oh, I didn't realize it.
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead, please. If you just bring the microphone.
Al, could you please talk into the microphone?
I think that it would be okay to go back and forth and to have you being, you know, suggesting a zoning amendment if we weren't already in the process. But we are already in the process, and we have been considering a zoning, you know, as we, not the planning board, but the zoning update committee has been in the process of updating our zoning. That's what we're doing. So we have been discussing something like this, and we've, we've also been discussing, you know, making more things, the role of the planning board, because the planning board, you know, this is regularly what we do, and what happens with the town board trying to take on this role of, of doing site plan approval. Maybe they do it once every five years, and then, you know, it's not really their thing. Once the zoning, it'll be just like the comp plan update. Once the zoning board is done amending all the zoning code, then, in order to be, have it be voted into law, then the town board has to go ahead and, you know, do SEACER on that law, the same as they did on the comprehensive plan update, and either approve it or ask us to come back with different suggestions, or not approve it at all. You know, that, that is legislatively the role of the town board. But once the zoning amendment is then in place, then that would govern how, how everything is done. So I think this is going to add, I mean, this is just my opinion, but it seems to me like this is going to add a lot of time to the whole approval process, to try and start over again from scratch with your, your proposal for a zoning amendment, and then, you know, go back and forth on it and see how it compares to what the committee was planning to do. And then, you know, it sounds to me like there's going to be a lot of this referral, and then this discussion, and then this back and forth. I mean...
Well, I, yeah, and I appreciate the perspective, but as you said, at the end of the day, legislation is a, is a town board function.
Right.
We've presented a petition with proposed code changes for the town board to consider. They, they can or they can't. We would hope that they would. And as part of that review process, that is going to be a collective enterprise of the town board and this board, and I kind of reading between the lines, in terms of the SEACER analysis, which is going to be the, really, the omnibus, you know, the kind of the driving environmental analysis and review of this project. Zone change, proposed site plan, subdivision, all those. It sounds like this board may be poised to take that role. That's, that's to be seen, but...
Right.
Okay, well, we'll see what happens then, you know. If the town board would rather, you know, work with this than with what the zoning board is doing, then that's the way it'll be.
What I'm hearing with Leroy Deere, though, is that she's on the zoning review committee, and so it sounds like you're pretty far along in drafting your floating zone.
Yeah.
And maybe based on that, it makes sense for this to be something else. But, you know, it's for discussion.
Right.
So that it's not interfering with all the work that your committee has done for the town at large.
Yeah, and I mean, it's not just our committee. We have consultants, and we have had feedback from consultants in, you know, other towns and studies that were done, and, you know, it's all been professionally run.
Right.
Oh, of course. I'm just saying, maybe this, maybe this shouldn't, it shouldn't be thought of as replacing that. It should be thought of as its own thing, and that's something for the applicant to go back and think about.
Right. That's a possibility. Again, when this property was thought to be the Windrose project 15 years ago, they proposed zoning that the town board changed a bit and then adopted, so... Yeah, there's some, certainly some precedent for that. And again, remember, Leroy Deere, I didn't realize that you had said you did want to speak.
Yeah, there was nobody working on the zoning at that time, though.
True.
So we really needed to do that.
Right, that project couldn't have happened without that zoning, so. All right. So I mean, the zoning, so is it the zoning review committee or the zoning update committee?
Zoning update committee.
Okay. So the zoning update committee could, could look at this proposal, correct?
The zoning update committee has this proposal. They looked at it, and they are looking at it. We will be discussing the proposal within the committee only on the next meeting.
Okay.
Plus, the consultants also gave us a review of what they thought, but we haven't had a chance to look at that yet.
Right, okay. And the zoning update committee is an advisory committee to the town board?
Yes.
For updating that?
Can I ask when that meeting will be held? The next meeting?
Secretary...
The meeting you're referring to?
He's asking when the next meeting of that zoning update committee...
It's, right now, it's scheduled, we meet on the third Wednesday of each month. But for anyone to come in and speak with us, it has to be by appointment only.
Okay.
So...
Dr. Pollardaro?
Oh, I was just thinking, you know, maybe we want to schedule a time a month from now to come back. Do you expect?
Excuse me?
Do you expect the commission to have an opinion at that time?
We're going to discuss it in November and maybe an opinion in December.
Okay.
I'll check with the chair.
And how do we make a request for an audience?
You call me.
Okay.
Okay. And again, it's not a committee, like the planning board is publicly accessible.
Right.
Right, okay. All right. Attorney Pollard, anything further for us to consider this evening?
Well, you might want to make a motion to formally refer it for a referral
Okay.
to the zoning update committee.
Okay.
And then, you know, do you want to give the board members a time to get their preliminary comments in? Just keep it open?
Yeah, I mean, because, you know, I don't know, I mean, members of the planning board, I think, could just trust that the zoning update committee's past was updating the zoning and this is a proposal, and, I mean, I guess people could weigh in if they want to, but the zoning update committee could.
Most of what the zoning update committee is doing is refining most of the definitions. Taverns, breweries, things like that have already been added. So that's our main focus, is trying to look at little things that we know over the last 30 years really need to be changed, and what the definitions were 25 years ago are entirely different now.
And, I mean, the zoning update committee in advising the town board, advise the town board, look, we want this to be part of the just overall zoning of the town versus, like, the recent solar law was, hey, we should look at this and then consider it, and then town board, you approve this, and now it's
Yes.
you know, before everything else is updated. So you could advise the town board in either, in either way.
And then the town board sends it back to the committee and we discuss the changes or whatever the comments were, and then send it back to the town board, and then the town board does the public hearing on it.
Okay.
So, is there going to be a motion to refer?
Yeah, I'm going to do that, we're just discussing.
Yeah, great. I just would ask if that, if that referral's made, obviously we want that to be, you know, a meaningful exercise, and I would ask if we can get on an agenda back before this board, if we can lock that in tonight, so that we keep the process moving.
Okay. Yeah, that's fine with me. So, let me just take out the words. I'll make a motion to refer the proposed local law of Starkdale Farms to the zoning update committee, which is an advisory committee of the town board, for their consideration and respectfully ask for a response from said committee in a timely manner. Seconded by
Second.
Member Palmer. Discussion?
Excuse me, who motioned?
I did. Seconded by member Palmer. Discussion. Seeing the discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say no. Motion passes seven zero. So, you know, again, we're not the town board, we can't approve your proposed local laws, you know.
No.
We're not the zoning update committee, we can't make them do anything, so. They don't report to us, so. You would like to be on the agenda, our next meeting would be not the first Monday of November because it interferes with Election Day, which is the next day, so our next meeting is November 18th. So with the zoning law, you know, being out there as the town of Dover, you know, may or may not consider your zoning law, or may look to change it through the recommendation of the zoning update committee, what do you foresee as the thrust of our discussion four weeks from now?
I would hope we would have some preliminary comments from board members so that we can at least begin to entertain those.
Okay.
To the extent we can have some dialogue directly with your consultants, we can do that as well and report back.
Okay. So you would like us to comment on the project
On the project.
that includes the zoning that doesn't allow us to do much of anything as the planning board?
Whatever comments you are going to provide us, we want to take a look at.
Okay. All right. So, we can certainly do that. And, anything further?
I just, do you want to put it on for the 18th or December 2nd, at which point we may have comments from ZUC?
I mean, from what I heard from Secretary Van Millen and a member of the zoning update committee, they will be meeting on November 20th, and then they would meet again on December 18th. So, it sounded like your thinking is that December 18th would be a vote of the committee to say, here's what we think.
The only thing with December 18th is the week before Christmas.
It is the week before.
So that's an if he date. So we would have to find out if the other committee members are available on any other day.
Well, I would suggest the 2nd of December, because at least if there's a meeting, we might have some preliminary feedback from the committee, and certainly, any comments from this board?
Sure, right, the November 18th would be two days before they meet, so
Yeah, yeah.
obviously not going to get any sort of feedback. Okay?
Try.
It's possible that you may discuss it and say, here's the initial thoughts or something, okay. So you would like to be placed on the December 2nd agenda with everything we already have, you're not looking to submit anything additional by the deadline for the December 2nd agenda, which would be
13th.
November 13th, yes, thank you.
I mean.
You could submit something by November 13th for the December 2nd meeting, that's fine.
We may have some
Okay.
response to the AKRF memo.
Okay. Upper preliminary scope for the possible DEIS, okay? All right. That's movement, sure. Okay, anything further?
No.
All right. Thank you. All right. Next on the agenda is a request for consultants' proposals for 2025. The consultants had asked if they could
Yeah.
step out for this? Thank you.
Good night, guys.
Shouldn't just turn that off.
Okay, so I brought this up and asked for it to be on the agenda because I have full faith in our consultants. Our engineer is outstanding, our planner in AKRF did a wonderful job, and, you know, our attorney knows our laws and the law forward and backward, so this is not about them. The comptroller's office in one of the, in an audit that was for the town government, had recommended that requests for proposals for professional services should happen on a semi-regular basis, I think they said every three years, that it had to be every three years, but, and then talked with the consultants, it just, you know, one consultant said, I don't know the last time anybody asked for, you know, proposals.
How many proposals are there?
Well, so it'd be about, you know, legal representation, planning representation and engineering. So, again, my thinking is this is something that we're supposed to do as a sort of a due diligence sort of thing. Again, not about our consultants, just about that the comptroller's office said that this is something that should be done on a periodic basis, and, you know, it was, it was done in 2008 when I was first elected as town supervisor, and then I don't know to what extent it would happen after that, so.
I think three years ago, when you took office as chair
Three years.
you asked
Right.
certain members if what they thought about the consultants.
Yes, but I don't know if we ever went to the
No.
to the level of a actual
You ever did a formal proposal, yeah.
No, but the town does send a formal out to all the consultants here for their proposal for next year.
Yeah. So, and it's done mainly for budgeting purposes.
For budget purposes.
Right, okay. So again, you know, if they're, if they're, the current, you know, attorneys, planners, engineers for the town think they're going to up their rates, then that obviously has an effect on the town budget, so it's good for the town board to know and the bookkeeper, oh, we need to make these adjustments, so. So really, what I'm asking for here is that, just that there's a motion for the planning board chair and secretary to have a request for consultant proposals for 2025, and then we will, you know, draft them and, you know, make that publicly available, and I certainly do want our consultants to be, you know, the first ones to submit that their interest and, you know, here's what we would do.
When you talk about proposals, are you talking about their agreements and contracts for next year?
These bids?
Well, no, so it's not a bid, because a bid would mean that you'd have to go with, you know, say like the lowest
Lowest responsible bidder.
Lowest responsible bidder, right. So again, because of the nature of what they do, it's a request for a proposal because, you know, the AKRF may charge a little bit more for, you know, some, some service that they provide, but that can be justified because they would do a much better job with the hundreds of people that work for them versus someone who just has, you know, four people working for them, is an example of how you want this framed as a request for proposals, so, yeah, you know, the, I mean, again, I think, what I said earlier, you know, prior to today was, you know, a letter of interest and here's what we're proposing, we would charge, I mean, I guess it has to be maybe a little bit more involved than that, so.
Basically, it's a rate sheet, we're going to charge you X per hour for this level of
They already have the town.
Already has all that.
Everything's already here, because the budget's going to be approved in less than a month.
Right. So again, this is just, like I said, comptroller's office recommended that this is done periodically, it's just to see if there's any other attorneys, planners and engineers out there who would say, oh, we could do that, and here's what we would charge, and then it's up to the planning board to decide, do we want to go with the people who've, you know, done an outstanding job for us for 16 years, I think, 17 years? Or do we want to go somebody new? So that's really it, so.
Do we need to put this out for advertisement?
I'm sorry.
Do we have to put it out for advertisement was the question?
It's too late, really, to have, we'd have to have
You can't, you can't do a
Everything's, the budgets are already
Right, no, but I mean, it could be, I think what you're saying is just, you know, that the planning Right, but, I mean, people can propose whatever they want, you know, so. So again, the motion I asked for, I think, was essentially that, the motion for the planning board to authorize the planning board chair and planning board secretary to put out requests for consultant proposals for 2025 in a matter and form that we decide. Motion made by
I'll move.
Member Sidore, seconded by
Second.
Member Palmer. Discussion?
Slightly concerned how you phrase it, because you're asking for proposals, that does that mean it's an open bid, or is it only proposals from the existing?
No, no, it's proposals from whoever is an engineer that would like to propose that they are, I would, you know, someone say, I would like to be an engineer for, for the town of Dover.
Wouldn't bids have to go out?
It's not a bid, it's a request for proposal, so that's what member Palmer was saying about advertising it.
But a proposal comes back as a bid, how are you going to publish it? Because once you do it, then it's the whole legal cycle with a public bid, or notice for RFP.
Right, and that's why the motion is worded so that it's the chair and the secretary would create the proposal and, you know, create the
Process.
process, thank you. So, this is what we're looking for and this is what we want to get back.
It seems like very tight on timing.
It is very tight.
Again, we could get this out sometime in the next week or two, and then ask for them to come back before, you know, November 18th meeting, or certainly by our December 2nd meeting, so.
Isn't there a minimum, though, if you put something out to bid?
Yeah, there's a cap.
That it has to be out there?
Again, you keep saying bid, it's a request for
But I understand, but a proposal equates someone giving you a bid to do it.
Okay, but that's not the legal term.
If you're putting it out there to get interest from other engineering firms, other attorneys, other planners, right, that's what you're doing.
Right.
So, does that not create, so if you say, hey, we're interested, who wants to, and by the way, give me your answer in two weeks, is that not, it, my understanding, when you go through governmental agency, there's minimum timelines that you have to consider for a request for proposal for this, for whatever, so.
And that's why the motion is worded such that we will figure out what needs to be done the correct way, rather than it being some kind of, you know, motion here that, you know, we will do this, we will do that, we will do this.
Right, no, I, I get that, but I'm just kind of questioning, if the town's already in the budget process and you, and you put this out there and all the rates come back wildly different, how can you even accept them?
Well, you
From even technically our current.
Right, it's a request for proposal, we can accept whichever proposal we want, and I hope we would accept the people we have, but.
The budget will be approved, it has to be approved by the 20th of November.
Okay.
The 20th of land?
Again, back when I was town supervisor, I had to put out a budget where I had to say, this is what the, you know, we're going to put in the budget for the ambulance contract, and low and behold, the ambulance company came in and exactly that number, so, people know how to
I, I get it, Ryan, I'm just
The town has already done that by contacting Rodenhausen, AKRF and Joe Berger.
Right.
So they already have their contracts for next year.
Right. And we still need to approve them to be the
We have to
attorney, planners and engineers for next year.
Yep.
And I fully expect that will happen.
Yes.
But again, the recommendation is that we do this periodically, so that's what the motion is about.
Yeah, I'm just confused on because if the town is the one doing the budget and we approve what the town usually gives us on their contracts, so isn't this something that we should have done earlier?
No, I mean, this is just something that, you know, because the planning board has money set aside in our budget to hire consultants, we're the ones that hire the consultants that we want for the planning board. So if the town board in their budget says, this amount of money is for attorney, this amount of money is for planner, this amount of money is for engineer, and it happens to line up with our current consultants
Okay.
then that's the way it is, and if someone else wants to propose something, they can propose whatever they want, and then we can accept it, which I wouldn't, or reject it.
Our arrangements with the consultants are renewed annually, correct?
Yeah.
We go through that every year, right?
Yes.
Typically, year to year.
And it makes sense to me that there should be periodic reviews of this sort.
Right.
But the timing makes no sense to me at all.
Exactly, that's what I'm saying.
And I think it's just too late to even consider it for this year. I would suggest setting up something like this perhaps next August.
That's fine.
Yes, because they usually start the budget process in September.
Because if another, let's say, engineering firm were to put through, were to respond and put through a proposal that seemed to be, you know, good and competitive and so forth, you want to have adequate time to really review it
Right.
and decide on it, if you're talking about having somebody respond by November 18th and having to have a decision November 20th, I just don't see the point, it seems like just spinning wheels in a useless exercise.
Are we being held to the fire about doing this currently?
No, it's not like it has to be done right now, so if So, if whoever made the motion, seconded, would like to withdraw their motion, we can just move on.
I would recommend putting it off until next summer.
I second that.
Well, yeah, I don't, we don't need to make a, I mean, we could make a, so if you want to make a motion that is, that the planning board will review consultant proposals starting when?
August, 2026.
Every three years, like the recommendation is, starting next August.
So, what I hear from Member Roman is a motion for...
A motion to have, what was the wording? You had requests for proposals?
Consultant proposals.
To be established in August of 2025.
August 2025, okay. Seconded by?
Member Williams.
Member Williams. Discussion on that motion? Okay. Seeing no discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no? Yeah, that motion passes. All right. So, our next meeting is November 18th. The deadline for that is nine days away.
I have not received anything from 3186.
Okay.
As if Yeddy's got an...
The restaurant?
Yeah, the restaurant.
And as of right now, we're not anticipating anything else? Okay. All right. So, we do have a meeting on December 2nd. We will have Starkdale Farms on the agenda December 2nd, just based on what they've submitted already. Maybe they will submit more. That deadline is November 13th. And then, we have a meeting on December 16th. Deadline is November 27th.
Do you want to set a deadline for any comments from the board on the Starkdale?
It's up to, it's up to the members. I mean, we didn't really discuss it as the planning board would comment on it because we're really looking for the zoning update committee to do that, you know, that's kind of like their job right now, so. Yeah. Yeah, I mean, you know, just, yeah, the meeting you said was Wednesday, November 20th. And it's for members of the committee and whoever else the committee would like to invite?
Right.
Right, okay.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Any other business before the planning board? Yeah, I'll need a motion to adjourn, seconded by?
Second.
Seconded by Member Sidore. All those in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, we're adjourned.
Stink.